We're good to go.
What's that? Like one minute. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. It's almost seven oh five, say it's seven oh five right now. Can I get a roll call this bell?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Ochipinti?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. In Garrett?
Hi, ma'am.
Mr. Hada?
Here.
And Ms. Salahuddin?
Here, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Dr. Deloria, do we have to add anything or anything to add to the agenda?
No, nope, the agenda is brief and there are no changes.
Fantastic. Can I get a motion? Excuse me to approve.
So moved?
All of them in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Fantastic, moving on to, uh, we did not meet in closed session. Um, communications board report. Um, Mr. Lee?
All right, not a whole lot here. I think I'm just excited to see how things are going to turn out this fall. I know it's, um, I know there's some challenges, challenging work ahead as, you know, looking ahead to the presentation for this evening. But I'm certainly grateful to all, to everybody for all the work that's been put into so far. And, um, you know, and just to remind us all that to give each other a lot of grace because there's going to be times where things don't work out the way that we want them to. And it's gonna be okay. It's still gonna be okay because we're, we're, we're all in uncharted territory right now. So, thank you all.
Yes, thank you. Turning it over to Mr. Ochipinti.
Yeah, thank you. Um, same, you know, there's, there's not a lot to report. I think all of us are kind of trying to, um, kind of focus our energies on returning to school, um, for, you know, in any form that's gonna be in the course right now, through distance learning and just to echo what, um, Justy Lee was saying, um, right now we are in uncharted territory in that sense and um, navigating, I think, you know, safety comes first and of course, um, being excited for, for school again. Um, we have to think, you know, and adapt. And so I'm looking forward to, um, how school is, um, gonna roll out and I'm glad, uh, just watching the news and, and keeping up with things around the county. I'm very proud of the decision of our district to move forward on, on this note where we're gonna be distance learning for the entire semester. And, um, I'm hoping that that provides a strong platform for other districts to explore as well. So, yeah. And of course, enjoying the same force work.
Thank you. And so we have it on YouTube. Happy belated birthday to you. We hope you had a good birthday. Turning it over to Ms. In Garrett.
Uh, I don't have much to report either. I agree with, um, Mr. Pindi and Mr. Lee about, um, I think the most important for us all is to remember, uh, communication and flexibility as we start the school year. And, but I really feel good about, you know, how things are going with as far as, um, what the plan is for our district. Um, I'm having my, uh, own struggle in, uh, my personal life with other parts of school district issues, but, um, you know, uh, but I'm grateful for everyone here that's putting in the work and, and, you know, being on the same page. And again, you know, I think like flexibility most important at this time, especially, um, during the start of the school year. So hopefully everyone is, um, staying healthy and safe. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Hada?
I just spaced out, I'm sorry. Is it only Tuesday? Um, so, you know, we just had the usual calls last week. Um, I'm really looking forward to convocation on Thursday. And that I will be able to attend all of it because it's a webinar and I can do it from home. It's not a great substitute, but at least, you know, I, I am looking forward to it and it's like kicking off the school year. Although we've been preparing and preparing all summer long for, I mean, just for months and months, right? Um, and I caught part of the distance learning webinar for staff last week and I have to say, I can listen to Ms. Robinson's presentations all day. I mean, I was so engaged and just the teamwork. It was so smooth. Um, you know, if she didn't have the answer, she would ask Ms. Baca. She would jump on and then if someone else didn't have the answer, something that Mr. Meyer had to answer, then he would hop on. I mean, it was so smooth and I was, made me so proud and that so many people attended. That was, um, during the summer and that people had so many questions. And even in the chat, they would answer each other's questions. I am, um, I am nervous for the school year. I, I really, you know, this is like everyone says, it's uncharted waters and I'm a little nervous. I'm a nervous as a parent as well. Um, because my daughter goes to bed at two, um, at two in the morning and she's gotta probably like a lot of kids, get their body clocks back, um, to school time and you know, I said, this is not how it was back in March. This is actually go, this is going to be school. So, um, and she's getting caught up on her summer, her summer work. So she's just been learning. Um, just, she's actually had weekly, uh, check-ins, weekly classes for math and and so she's been engaged all summer. So she feels like she hasn't had a summer. And I know there are gonna be a lot of kids, a lot of teachers and staff who will, who feel that way too. Um, I mean, I feel like, I mean, I didn't have a summer, but yeah, I never go anywhere anyway. So, um, but you know, I, I am looking forward to, um, to school and getting on a schedule and just the, the whole district has our full support. And, uh, we're in this together. It, it sounds trite, but we really are. We are all in this together.
Thank you, Ms. Hada. Um, so, oh, for me, I just wanted to highlight, um, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors had a very busy meeting today. It went from nine o'clock to almost five. Um, and they voted on a lot of things that were significant to education, um, one being they're starting the process of trying to get wifi for the county, um, but targeting communities, um, East Palo Alto, um, Pescadero, the coastal area, um, and a few other areas that have very low pockets, large pockets of wifi that have large school populations and starting the process of getting them all hooked up for wifi. So, uh, they invested a huge amount of money into starting that process and hopefully getting it throughout the county of having San Mateo County have wifi for all who need it. Um, the other thing that they did was, um, they, um, created a, a grant account of one million dollars for, uh, schools in San Mateo County that serve large, larger populations of students who don't have access to regular food, um, so that they can fill in the gap from the loss of the essential summers program. Um, so that's gonna be managed to the San Mateo County Office of Education. Um, so I was extremely grateful for that. Um, they also, um, declared racism. They passed a resolution that declared racism a health issue, a county health issue. Um, so, um, that was, you know, re, um, resolutions are nice. I'm hoping they follow it up with action, but it's a good first step that they took that. But the problematic part for me was then they followed it up with a fine for not wearing masks, which I understand that's a really important issue and that we need to get people serious about wearing masks. Um, but I don't know if a hundred dollar fine for not wearing a mask is the way to do that. Um, so I'm hoping that we can really educate our school population, our J U H S D community that that fine is coming and that it's extremely important to wear masks and um, the way we get back to school sooner is that if everybody wears a mask when they go out and hopefully we can find ways to get masks to people who don't have them. So that is my report. Turning over.
Thank you. So I want to reiterate some words that Trustee Lee said that we really need to move ahead with um, flexibility, obviously. Um, we need to be able to, when we, we look at metrics and we see ways to improve, we definitely need to be flexible there. And we certainly need to think about grace and forgiveness. And I'm really, really thinking about that forgiveness part as I report to you some information that I received. I don't know if you had a chance to read my emails today. Um, but on my county call today, one of the thing that Nancy McGee shared with all of us is that there's, um, there's quite a stir in Sacramento over the state COVID data. And if you remember several weeks ago, Kalima and I sat with some health officials and, uh, what, we were looking for guidance from them on metrics we could use to inform us better of bringing students and staff back to schools. And I brought up that when I compared our county data to the state's, um, table of San Mateo County, that, that, that they weren't aligned and a lot of times they were off by a lot. And they had the, the staff at the county health department had reasons for that, that I just kind of went along with because I, you know, who am I to doubt, you know, their expertise? But it turns out, um, and I don't know if this is gonna become a news, to me, it's newsworthy that the state is having problems, um, trusting their own state data. And that's problematic because it's on the state metrics that counties make determinations about county closures. And then of course, based on county closures, I mean, you have county officials who make decisions about businesses and the degree to which they can be open or close. So that's problematic. It's problematic for us because, um, when, when we're trying to make a sound decision about the safety of our students and staff, if we can't rely on that data, um, and Pete, there are already people who don't trust it anyway. So the fact that there's flaws is only going to amplify that. So I'm concerned about that. Um, but I will, I will say when, uh, April and I are working on some communications to go out to staff, families and students by Friday, we'll be sure to include information there about the fines because that was, I was not hap, I was happy to see the, the relief for food services. I'm not sure how the county, how the, the Department of Education is going to issue that money. Um, but I was concerned about the fines as well. Um, so I wanted to share that with you. Um, in response to the data question, if you remember a couple of weeks ago, I said I was gonna come up with a way to collect local data. And so I've been working with Doreen Basuino and we created a, a form and it's on every employee's calendar. Thank you Candace for that, with a link. And so the expectation is that when employees return to work, um, and so that means for administrators and 12-month employees, that already happened this past Monday. Um, for teachers and other certificated, it's Thursday, and then there's some other groups that start when students start on Monday, the following Monday. But each workday by eight thirty, employees have to report on this survey that will tell us what their temp, well, it's not gonna tell us their temperature. It'll tell us whether their temperature is higher than a hundred point four and then they'll also report symptoms. Um, and with that data, I hope to look at some trends, be able to collect trends over time and that along with some of the county data, I think we can look at and will be more informed. Um, having some baseline data. So we started, started with that. I just want to thank President Casey. Thank you for supporting that, Monica. I, I just think that having the data is, is crucial when we're making those kinds of important decisions. And, and just a reminder to everybody that we do have convocation Thursday at nine AM. Um, I'll start with a very, very brief welcome because I have a presentation later in the morning. Um, Kalima will welcome everybody and then we have Nicole Anderson who will be doing a fifteen to twenty minute presentation around, um, race and education. So I think you'll look forward to that. We're also doing the longevity award. So it'll be a little different this year because it's in, it's not in person, but I still think it's gonna be a good, um, back to school activity for all of us. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Rosie, were you able to get back on?
Yes, I'm back. Do you see me?
Okay, no worries. I just want to check. Um, yeah, I can see you. I'm also having internet issues. So I don't know if it's a city thing or
okay.
What's going on?
Can I add two more?
So you're not alone. Yes.
Can I add two more things? Sorry. Um, the other thing I learned in the county meeting today is that, that uh, our legislatures did not pass legislation protecting school districts from liability. So remember, we were asking for protection for, um, when students come back, that when kids got sick, that we wouldn't be held responsible for that. And legislation hasn't passed and until something like that, until there's some kind of guarantee on that, I'm gonna have a real hard time bringing students back. So I wanted to share that with you. Also, um, there was one more thing and I don't know why I'm having a hard time keeping things in my head. Oh, well, I guess I'll mention it later. Thank you.
No, it's okay. It's, it's been a long day because I also forgot and I just wanted to thank the board members who signed the letter, but the eviction moratorium was also extended. So thank you to all the board members here that signed the letter. We're part of a large coalition, um, to get the adventures moratorium extended because they were gonna end this month and school starts this month. So I was really concerning to have that eviction moratorium start right when schools are ending, or school was starting. So, um, moving on to consent agenda, um, unless there is a change or anyone wants to pull anything, can I get a motion to approve?
I see Monica waving her hand.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Monica. Now I'm having problems. I want to turn it over to you for your.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I wanted to thank the board and the administration for helping us move on to the distance learning for the full semester. Um, really appreciate that and I, I agree with Nick and that, you know, we need to do what's right and I think other districts around us are seeing that. Even though none of us are happy about it. I mean, we all want to be with our students live. Um, but that's the safest thing to do. Um, and, and frankly, it enabled us to really concentrate on creating a robust, robust set of options for schools, especially for that first week, August tenth through the fourteenth. Thank you to all those people who served in the committee. Um, and, you know, I think that's really helped the schools. Um, the next thing we need to do is we need to finish negotiations, um, for a contract for first semester. That's the next step. Um, so Tony and I will be working on that. And then of course, for the second semester, because it may be different than the first semester. So we have to kind of do the stages or the steps as well. Um, and that's not gonna be easy, I know, but I think we can, we can figure it out together. Um, another thing that I wanted to talk about, which, um, one of our members, Andrew Hambre, who, um, is a teacher at Westmore brought up once, he spoke on it once, the youth, um, leadership initiative is holding a candidates forum on October fourteenth in Daly City, um, for Daly City also. And, um, there's other teachers that are collaborating with them to create space for our community to look at issues that impact us and grow awareness for the November election. And I'm going to, um, put that in the chat, the link to the youth leadership initiative. As of right now, the flyer is not, not for sure done, but, um, but eventually when it is, I will send it to you all. Okay? That's it for me for today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, sorry about that again. All right, now moving on to, um, the consent agenda, um, if I can get a motion to approve.
Move to approve? Consent? Second.
Great. Candace, were you able to tell who that was?
Yes, I got, um, Andy first and Nick second.
Perfect. All those in favor? Aye, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. All right, moving on to, um, public comment. Do we have any public comment cards?
No public comment for tonight.
Thank you. Onto our discussion items. We have one item for discussion, our COVID nineteen emergency response. Turning it back over to Dr. Del.
Thank you. So I will turn it over to each of my associate superintendents in just a moment, but I, I, I want you to reflect as you're hearing about some of these updates that I think we've made a lot of progress as, as a district in terms of this emergency because of the relationships we have in place. The fact that we listen to each other and while we don't always agree, um, we listen and give everyone a voice and then finally get to what I think is the right decision. So you're gonna hear some more evidence of that, um, in action again tonight, um, especially as Ms. Baca does her update. And with that, I will turn it over to, let me start with Tina. Do you have an update for the board tonight?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Deloria. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to let you know that as school starts, as we talked about last time, the food service program will be changing some. Uh, we're going to continue to serve on Tuesdays and Fridays, but we're gonna shift the time so that, um, it doesn't conflict with when students need to be on their synchronous learning. So meal service will be on Tuesdays and Fridays from one PM to three PM. And, um, starting next week, we're also gonna be asking students to provide their student ID numbers, which we need to get the federal reimbursement. And as we're doing that, there will be, that's when we will be able to start catching the kids who are not in our district and make sure that they understand that they need to start going to their district, um, when their programs open back up on August nineteenth. So we'll have that transition time between August tenth and August nineteenth, where, where we'll be making sure that everybody understands that after the nineteenth, once the elementary programs open back up, we'll only be serving our students. So we feel like we have a good communications plan. Um, April Hawkins has been helping with the, the flyer creation and updating our website. We're gonna put information in the next parent communication. All of the principals have materials that have been going out to, um, families as they're doing their communications. Um, so I think that everything's on track for that to be a smooth transition. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Presta, do you have anything for the board tonight?
I have a quick update. I just want to echo, um, good evening, everybody. I just want to echo what Ms. Casey said. We started working on the MOU earlier this week and we're gonna be, um, continuing until we get it, it, uh, figured out. Um, as she said, though, there will, we will undoubtedly have a second MOU. We're only gonna do the first semester right now since we know what the plan is for the first semester. So we'll have to meet again after that. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Ms. Baca, take us home.
Right. Good evening, President Salahuddin. Good evening, members of the board. Um, tonight I'll be presenting on, um, the, it's some updates from Ed Services regarding three, um, topics. So I will be sharing my screen and I also have with me Dr. Robinson who will, um, facilitate part of that presentation. Right. So three things that I would like to cover tonight, um, are just a basic start of the school updates on where we are as far as student orientations. Um, things that have been done at the school site level and also a, um, there's been a discussion about, um, since we are in distance learning, are we going to continue to follow, um, the cohort model? Um, also give you a brief update on the SAT and PSAT school, the administration for this year and what college board had done in order to meet, um, the needs because of COVID. And then finally, um, Dr. Robinson will be talking about, um, the discussions that her, um, grading policy subcommittee had been talking about as far as, um, grading for the following year. So the objective is again, provide updates on the first week of school. And then I'm going to present, um, some of the PSAT SAT logistics from the college board and I am asking for direction from the board on how we would like to proceed for this year. And I'll also, um, provide a recommendation from administration. And then finally, um, we just kind of want to hear what your thoughts are on the, um, grading policy um, that has been discussed on whether we're, you know, going the right direction or are we completely off? So a little bit of direction on that would also be helpful. Um, so I'm gonna stop after every each section so we can have a discussion clarification question because the three topics are different. So start of the school update, um, first of all, I just really wanna, um, commend our principals and our vice principals, our teacher leaders, department heads. Everybody has been working so hard and nonstop and trying to figure out what school will start like. Um, I know that, um, there's been lots and lots of meetings and lots and lots of anxiety, but I think it's shaping out fairly well. Um, so I just want to say that, you know, each of the school site is doing something a little differently and yet, um, it's, the message is pretty much the same. Um, so our principals have, you know, their own PLC decided to meet and just jump on a call and then just really align to what everyone is doing. So essentially what is, um, going to happen if not late tonight, early tomorrow morning, the IT department will be sending out the username and passwords um, for our Google account and the network login to all of our students so that they could check what work is assigned to them for August tenth through the fourteenth. Each of the school site developed their own Google classroom for each of the grade level with assignments, um, that they will be completing during that day. So, you know, Jefferson High School communicated through their website, email, um, through Smore, which is an awesome, um, application. Terranova also posted something on their website. Oceana is creating a, um, a welcome week. So this is their orientation and activity. So they're, um, creating a website for that. And then Westmore, um, is going through their drive-through orientation, um, this week because they want to make sure that students have devices before August tenth. I know that one of the school, I believe, will do their pickup on August tenth. And then finally, the other thing that we are going to discuss, we have a principals meeting tomorrow. Um, we're gonna be talking about, um, you know, do we continue to follow cohorting the students? Um, even though we're in distance learning. So our goal again is of course, you know, to increase the contact with the students, but we want it to be in a meaningful way. And so we will be discussing that tomorrow and we'll be communicating that out to the staff. Um, that's pretty much it about the first week of schools. I'm gonna stop here because you may have some questions. All right, no questions. So I'm gonna move on. Oh.
Mr. Hada?
So, um, I know that, uh, since March, we've been doing a lot of outreach to, uh, get devices to students. And, um, so you said that Westmore is doing a drive-through orientation and trying to get devices to students this week, I guess, before August tenth. And so what are we as a district doing right now to try to reach those students? For instance, the ones we couldn't reach, um, who we know need devices.
So what we have done is we've created a, um, a field in synergy that is attached every student. And we have marked whether they have a device or, um, or whether they need a device or a hotspot. And then from there, so every person will be tagged on like, you know, check, you don't, you know, need a device. Check, you don't need a, a hotspot. And then from there, our, um, administration can run a query and figure out who we have not reached. And also what I had asked them to do is, um, the ones that we cannot reach, we have to make multiple attempts in multiple ways. And in every way that they attempt that contact, they have to log it in. Um, because what we may have to do is do home visits. We may have to deliver the devices to them. And so we have just started. So right now we're just finding out the ones that basically self-reported that they need a device. But what's going to happen throughout, you know, the first week of school is really, you know, figure out who we have not heard from and then, um, make sure that they have access.
And so following up on that, I'm wondering, we talked about it earlier, but the folks that we are giving devices, we know, we said that they can work for multiple people. Um, but I'm wondering, like, if, But I'm wondering, if the, for the Wi-Fi, but for the laptop. Are we ensuring, you know, if they have a younger, a student that's in another grade or. Um, the family has a student that's in another district. That that student also has, they're not sharing a laptop or?
And so we will provide a device um for every JUHSD student that we have. So if they have, you know, multiple students, we can provide a Chromebook for that JUHSD student. Um, but my guess that is if they're from other districts, my guess is that they will be doing the same and issuing their own device for that district as well. And hotspot.
Okay, is there, oh, okay. Um, I guess I ask, is I just, are we, we know that Jefferson Elementary or in Pacifico, like they, they are doing that? They are giving out Chromebooks and hotspots?
I know with SB 98, you know, we have to make sure that every single student has access to the internet and a device. Um, so right now I know that it's almost, we have to give access to every student.
Hey, this, this is Jake. I know that Jeff L. has signed on with T-Mobile. It's the same program that we're signing on with. I'm not positive about PSD though. I'm not positive what they're doing.
And, and BeSure.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're doing either.
It would just be good to know that, you know, I know we're all required to do certain things, but um, you know, the. I don't know if everyone's moving as fast as we are to make sure that these things are happening at the same rate. So. You know, I'm just wondering if we can, is there a way to check to see? That they're all doing that? So that's the start of school, every student in our district?
I, I can tell you, all of the fewer districts are in the process of figuring that out. Remember, they're not all starting next Monday. Some of them don't start until the 19th.
Mm-hmm.
Careful how I phrase this. Again, remembering grace, flexibility, and forgiveness. Um. They may not have as great, I think we have great customer service in our district. The fact that. You heard Ms. Baca say if we have to do home visits to check, to stop by and ask, do you need a computer? Do you need a hotspot? Here you go. Um, I don't know that everybody's going to that extent. Um, I can tell you, they all have a process for getting devices out. They all have to start distance learning. We're on the watch list now.
Yeah, I get that. And so and just in talking about equity. And if a student has to share a device.
Mm-hmm.
With, you know, especially a family that's never had a laptop, right? So a parent may want to use it as well for the limited access. So. Um, I just want to make sure that the student has access to the device at any, whenever they need to have access to the device and it's, we are truly being equitable. So. That's really the point I'm trying to make. Trustee Lee?
Ms. Baca, just a clarification. I'm just trying to understand. Um, the discussion that's occurring tomorrow with regards to cohorting. I was under the impression when we approved all of the schedules that we were sticking to that cohort schedule, what is changing or what are the new discussions that are occurring?
Um, so there has been um questions that we may want to increase the contact time. Um, instead of meeting just, you know, one day synchronously with their students, maybe, you know, we may combine both. Thirty-four students all at one day and then the following day, we may, you know, split the period into, you know, two cohort A and cohort B. Um, or they may want to meet with their students both, you know, both of the times that they are meeting, all thirty-four of them, but still have breakout rooms. So what we're, you know, trying to do is really have some consistency within the school sites. Um, just to make sure that, you know, not this one class is meeting, you know, four times a week and found a way to meet four times a week. And then this one class is only meeting, you know, thirty minutes in a week. So what we're trying to do is, you know, standardize at the school site level on what that would look like. Um, because as you know, you know, Jefferson is already piloting something a little different. Um, and I know that, you know, other schools too are having that discussion. Like, you know, do we have to stick to that cohort A or B? So what we're trying to see is, you know, whatever it is, we need to make sure that the school sites and the parents and the students. Get that communication and it's consistent because that has been the problem in the spring. Um, you know, they were saying, well, this teacher did this, this teacher did that, so we need to be um. Um, under, you know, on the same page.
I think that we have, the fact that we have teachers who are trying to figure out ways. To meet more in-person with your students is a testament to their commitment um to distance learning. So I'm really proud of that. I want, and so we're going to start this conversation tomorrow, but I'm hesitant to change any schedules because we approve schedules. And uh, if I'd been one of those principals or one of those teachers, I would be, I probably have my whole first two weeks all planned out. So I, I don't want to encourage anybody to change your schedule this, at this point, but we should be talking about the kinds of metrics we're going to collect. Whether, whether it's um, you know, discrete data or um qualitative data, we need to start collecting that so that if we're going to make changes in schedules. Um, we're thinking about that over the next six weeks and we have a plan in place. For how we're going to get consent, you know, consensus at a school and how we're going to communicate that out. But I don't want to be in a situation where one teacher is meeting four times a week. And another teacher, maybe in the same subject, is only meeting with students one time a week. Um, and, and as I explained, it could, you could have teachers meeting once a week who have some great asynchronous lesson plans. But honestly, families, most parents don't understand that. They don't understand the difference between an asynchronous assignment and homework. And so I want to make sure that we're very thoughtful about this, that we're communicating out to all of the circles and it doesn't appear like we're doing an abrupt change in direction. Trustee Tahada?
Yes, so for Jefferson, when we approve the. I guess the hybrid, there are three cohorts. And so then now with the all-at-home learning, I believe it's two cohorts. But then if we go, if we are able to safely go back to school. In the spring, we would have to have, go back to three cohorts, I believe. So how would, I, I mean, how would we adjust that? Um, if we started the kids in two cohorts and then switch them to three?
So the cohorts right now are not really separated by in the master's schedule. It's, you know, it's your thirty-four, thirty-two students and saying, okay, it, last names A through L, your cohort A. M through Z, you know, your cohort B. And then when we split that, we just change the alphabet. Oh, we're not doing anything, you know, within the master's schedule where we're creating different sections for each of the cohort. Because we know that we have to be flexible and fluid on how this is going to um work out. Plus, you know, taking attendance for three different cohorts within a period um could be really, really complex.
Okay.
All right, anything else from anyone? Can you turn it back over to you, Ms. Baca?
Okay.
This is the first week of school. Um, the second part of my presentation is the SAT/PSAT School Day Administration. As you know, for the last two years, um, we administered the SAT and the PSAT to all of our students um district-wide, grades nine through twelve. Um, this year with COVID, there are a couple of changes that the College Board had implemented in order to um maintain um social distance. Kind of help us and do some accommodations for us. One of the things that they had decided was they were going to allow us to do off-site testing. Um, so in the past, what that really means is that um a student. May take the test at a district office or a different school site. Um, different setting where it could potentially be larger, where there's a lot more social distancing that, you know, could happen that could accommodate the students. Um, in the past with off-site testing, there were a series of forms that we had to fill out and get approvals after approval to get this approved. So they're just saying that right now, all we just, there are no approvals needed. All, you know, we can say that we're testing at the district office during this day and they would be okay with that. So that's one of the things that they have, um, had said was going to change for this year. The other thing is that um in the past, there were only one day of SAT School Administration. Um, and one day for the PSAT and MSQT. Um, and then there is a makeup day. So it's usually um in October on a Wednesday. It's a SAT School Day. And then um a Saturday during October is their makeup day. So what they're doing this year is that um the PSAT eight-nine could test between September 21st and March 26th. Um, that has always been really flexible, but for the PSAT and MSQT for the 10th and 11th graders, they give us three options. So the original date is the August, um, sorry, October 14th, which is a Wednesday. And then October 17th, which is a Saturday, and then October 28th, which was originally designed for the makeup day. They said we can use it to not just do makeups. Um, and then for the SAT, they gave us three different dates, September 23rd, October 14th, and October 28th. So when I just look at this, you know, what would potentially make sense is to, you know, administer it per grade level. So October 14th will be the 10th grade, October 28th will be the 11th grade, and September 23rd would be the 12th grade. Like, okay, that could potentially work. Um, the other thing that they had said we could do is um flexible start times. So we can stagger students. Um, so we can have like an 8:30 to 11:30 cohort and then we can ask students to come in in the afternoon. So that is an option for us. Um, but really the bottom line is that they will not do a um, an online testing. Um, the only online testing allowed is for um the ninth graders. So all the others will have to do an in-person paper and pencil administration. So um Executive Cabinet talked about this and, you know, what are some of the pros of administering the SAT/PSAT School Days? So of course it provides longitudinal data, progression per grade level. Um, since smarter balance is only administered in the 11th grade, this has given us data per grade level and we can look at their progress each year. Um, some colleges, I know that the U C and CSU um have eliminated this as one of their criteria, but some colleges could potentially still use this for college admission. It could also be used as a play placement criteria when they first enter the college, whether they're in, you know, the first um college credit-bearing course in a college level class. It could also be used for scholarships and it could also be used as a criteria for our own AP enrollment. Some of the cons is that because it has to be in person, we increase the potential health risk. Um, we don't really know who would be willing to proctor students, even if it's in smaller group. And um, this will require lots and lots of preparation and communication. Um, we would have to submit the accommodations for students with IEP and just planning for all of this on top of. Planning for distance learning is um very challenging. And we, we're not even really sure because of what's happening right now, how valid and reliable this data will be for um 2021. So um, it's our recommendation that we suspend the administration of the SAT and the PSAT in the fall of 2020. However, um, we can explore, we don't know if, you know, if this is possible at all, if it is safe. Then maybe we can look into administering the PSAT nine in the spring and then PSAT 10 also. Um, of course, that's um if the conditions are safe. So that's our recommendation and what um I, we would like is some guidance and then direction as to, you know, whether do we not contract this year with College Board and kind of wait and pause. Um, and I'm going to stop there. Ask for your opinion.
Awesome. I'm just going to go through each one of you since we all have to give um our opinion and also because my internet's not working great and my screen's freezing. So sometimes you're in the rain and I can't see it. So I'll start with um, trustee Lee.
Okay, so a couple of, a couple of thoughts anyway on this for me. Certainly the suspension of the administration of the test this fall makes sense to me. It's, it would be inconsistent to bring people back on the campus to proctor an exam. When we've already said we shouldn't be on campus in the first place. So that's, I, and I think that's where I personally would hold the line. Um, I think, you know, exploring the possibility of those exams in the spring when conditions could be different, you know, I think, I think that's a valid way to approach at least those two grades. The other piece of it too is that, you know, I think we've sort of seen, you know, all over that, you know, colleges themselves are. In a weird place right now and who knows, you know, they're in just as a strange situation as we are. You know, and who knows what it'll look like for them even next year as, you know, as students. Some students certainly are opting out of, of, of attending the schools they were admitted to this year and going to community college instead, that sort of thing. So. So, and I would anticipate that, given that UC and CSU in particular, where a lot of our graduates who do want to four-year schools attend. Are opting not to, you know, use the SAT. I think it's perfectly fine for us to, to uh not do, to not offer the exam. But certainly from a consistency of messaging and the fact that we're already saying, no, we're not going to have anybody on campus. I think that by itself is enough to suspend the administration of the exam.
Thank you. Trustee Ojipindi?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with everything that trustee Lee was just saying and just kind of echo that. Um, one, colleges given, even the discussion of, of suspending certain requirements for admission. Um, certainly, you know, in the last past semester and, and looking forward through the next past, the next upcoming two semesters. Um, even like, are, just our, our protocol in terms of returning to public education and education altogether. I don't know that there's um much equity you can offer in assessing students. Um, even students with IEPs, if you provide those accommodations, first thing is safety. Um, I wouldn't want to invite students back for an SAT, um, if we're not even considering, you know, um, or at the, at. In a position where we can really be encouraging students, um, or anybody to be returning back to, to any site safely, whether it's onsite or offsite. Um, the other thing I guess being is, you know, uh, I think it's good to look forward to think about, maybe we can do this in the spring, of course, you know. Just, you know, kind of play it by ear and see what we can do because the other part of equity is making sure that students have access to be able to take this test if they want to opt into that. And that goes for our students who are um considering taking AP courses. Even in the meantime, I think the uh, the responsibility is on the College Board, the organization, um, you know, offering all these tests, SAT and AP tests. To really reconsider their stance on equity during these times because um it's putting our students and our teachers in all of our districts in a really awkward position. To try to prioritize um their college trajectories when they're just trying to get, and do the best they can. So, yeah, I support the idea and uh, I'm glad that we're discussing it.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett?
Um, trying to get some clarification. So we, we don't administer it with the students want to go somewhere else to try to take it or basically it's just like we're, it's just dead in the water and then we just delay it. For the next school year or, you know, whatever next semester would it be?
So um, students choose to take it, they would have to sign up on their own. Um, and it's usually on a Saturday. Um, that would be their option.
And they would just take it somewhere else because we're not going to be the ones to administer it here. Okay, so then.
A testing center.
Okay, and then we're also not going, obviously, we're also not going to be paying for it for this year since we're not offering it. Um, okay, but yes, I definitely agree. I mean, like, again, you know, um, health and safety is a priority. Um, you know, and everything else would just, for me, would just fall in line with that. So should, you know. Should that risk the um priority of being healthy and safe for our community, then of course, you know, I would say we would postpone it. So. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Tahada?
Uh, safety first. So um, and I, there are just so many inequities um involved in this, but safety first. Um, I wouldn't send my daughter anywhere in person to take a PSAT. Or even an SAT right now. She's already asking, you know, well, I know, she knows that the UCs and aren't even, um, they're thinking of, or did they already? Um, not, uh, they're not going to be using SATs for admissions. But then she said, what about the private colleges? What, what, if I want to go to USC? What, what, if I want to go to USC, I'll have to take one. And I said, well, I don't know. I mean, you've got two years, but still, you know, for our district, our students, our staff, um, I mean, in-person paper and pencil? No, no, safety first, always.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo the statements everyone else said. I agree. Um, I'm also wondering, um, can we, can we, if we're on the watch list still at that time, can we have in-person testing of a large body of students?
Well, because school education is considered essential service, be able to do that. Um, but even if we could, I don't know how, how sound that data is gonna be. I mean, kids have in classrooms and to think that they can, that they can come back and test and, and, and demonstrate their best to me is, I don't, I don't think you can count on that. And so the data becomes for me, is this something we really want to use for placement of our own students? And I would say no.
Right, so I, I forget that, you know, so the whole essential services thing is still to me very problematic, because if it's not safe to go into a restaurant or get your haircut, I don't see how it's safe to like come into a large room and get a PSAT test and, or SAT. And then on top of that, um, it will be right, that will be right in the middle of flu season. So there's like a, a couple of different variables going on there. Um, and then, you know, again, getting into the issues of students who, you know, may have something where health-wise or they live with a family member who has health issues that they wouldn't be able to um, come in at all, regardless of what was happening, they wouldn't be able to come in at all. So there's that piece of it as well, that we want to be able to make something available to all of our students. So, um, I agree with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the last part, I'm gonna ask um Ms. Robinson to share her screen to um discuss what has been um talked about as far as grading policy, um, to make sure that we're looking at our grading through an equity lens. So first of all, you know, I just really, really want to thank her from the bottom of my heart in leading this, you know, committee. Um, couldn't ask for a better person to facilitate this um subcommittee, so I'm gonna turn it to Ms. Robinson.
Um, the main metric in which I do my job is to try and just uh make Corinne Baca's life a little bit easier um, and to take stuff off of her plate. And so whenever I can do that, um, I gladly will. Um, so let me take you through uh the presentation that actually the grading committee has been kind of working off of um in our days of work um, together, and you can kind of have a similar experience that they did. First off, I want to definitely give a shout out to the grading committee, because um there's been a lot of committees, there's been a lot of meetings, and um they're on their summer vacation, a lot of these teachers and students. And um it's, you know, a lot to give up the time to talk about something that, you know, can be kind of contentious and emotional. Um, and, and so I really appreciate them um for doing that. We have teachers from at least every single one of our sites. We tried to focus on teachers with different backgrounds, uh, you know, with the students with I E Ps, students learning English. Um, we also try to focus on inviting teachers who are newer to the district, more veterans to the district, um, all of that. So, um, and we have had a student at each one of our meetings. Um, we haven't been able to get a student to come consistently yet, but we're hoping tomorrow, we've got our third meeting, um, that Sky Acosta from Lesmore or J R Robles from um Jefferson will be able to come back um to give us feedback, because their feedback has been um so helpful. Um, and um our objectives have kind of been twofold. Um, so what we're really looking at is, what any kind of recommended changes are we making to the grading scale? Um, because that is what the superintendent recommends to you all to adopt as board policy. And then also, what recommendations are we making about grading practices? So these would be similar to kind of all the subcommittees of the Return to School Committee, just the general recommendations that we would provide for teachers' considerations. Um, we always start out with a little whip question. Uh, this last week, it was what book you've seen that's been made into a movie particularly well, or what one you would want to see? So you guys can all leave your um answers in the chat there. I'd be curious to hear it. I will say the previous meeting, it was one, what's one skill you learned? And our student, J R Robles, said the most touching answer. He was like, I've been really trying to work on the skill of active listening, because I think it's really important and not enough people do it. And I was like, oh my gosh, that is my inspiration for the week. Um, so af- after we kind of get oriented, we jumped into this graphic, which helped us to kind of um consider two important things. Um, this is just a, i- i- you know, it's a conversation piece, really. It's to get us to kind of debate what we see as a common trend um in grades and how specifically they're calculated, because most grades are set up with points and they're averaged. And um so the first question is, you know, you can see all of these students currently have a seventy-nine percent, which would translate to the grading scale as a C. And the first question to kind of consider is, you know, are all of these students actually in the same place? You know, when you look across how they did across various units. And then the second question being, um, does every student's grade, that seventy-nine, really reflect their learning? When you look back through how they performed on the various uh units? And so um the teachers kind of started off with the discussion around this. And one of the main things that popped out was really looking at student six and student seven, um, because you see that those students, um, student six got a zero on the first unit. Um, student seven got a zero on that um last unit, while otherwise having really great performance in all of the other units. And so one of the teachers pointed out, you know, what's unfortunate about the zero is that it's just not telling us a lot, right? What happened in unit one with that student? What happened in unit five with the, with student seven? Um, what's going on with, you know, student four? Where, why did they hit that streak of success? What, what changed for them? Um, or, you know, almost more concerningly, what's going on with student five? You know, what's, what's happening? It's, it's not really telling us that story. And grades, we had a conversation afterwards about what we value about grades and what the real purpose about grades is. And Chris Korp from Oceanus said a really great thing, or he's like, you know, sometimes it's this paradox where we want to give them really accurate information and feedback about how they're doing and how they're progressing. But there's also this delicate balance of not wanting to discourage them and put this label on them, you know, that grades can kind of do. You know, J R brought up, the student, you know, it does affect student self-esteem. It does affect how they see each other. It's, they, they often, when we see it as teachers' feedback, sometimes it can feel like a branding um to a student. And so, um, especially when you see extremes like, like we often see in the zero, in what that will do to the overall average. Um, so what to do? So we kind of took a look at the traditional grading scale and, you know, I've been quoting this a lot, but you know, um, COVID nineteen's been hard, but um we can't let a, a crisis go to waste, you know? And if we're really gonna, you know, not just go back to normal, which I don't think we should be striving to do and take advantage of these opportunities to take a hard look at some of our, um, you know, assumed practices. Um, this is the traditional scale. What can we do to kind of disrupt this scale? So I posed that to um the group, and there kind of came about two plans. Now, we've, just as also kind of uh caveat to this, we've had two meetings, you know, so we've covered a lot of ground and a huge issue in two meetings over really this, the span of a week and a few days. And so these were the two plans that kind of came up. So, um, the first one, Plan A. Um, I mean, the original wording of this is to change the grading scale to a hundred to fifty. What we really mean by this, the intent, the, the overall hope for Plan A is to essentially eliminate what we have dubbed the super F. So, you know, when you look at the a hundred point scale and you see how the grade bands are broken down, you know, like to go back to this slide just really quickly, it's, you know, ten percentage points until you get to an F. Then an F accounts from everything from fifty-nine all the way down to a zero. That's, I mean, you're, you're so much more likely to get an F, and when the F is averaged into your grade, it's the, it's the thing that's most likely to have the biggest impact. So, um, you know, we want to kind of otherwise retain a familiar grade scale for teachers, that A, B, C, D, F. Um, but we want to try and get rid of the super F. And so there's been a lot of discussion about the ways that we can kind of work with our synergy gradebook um to achieve that. Um, the other plan um would work to eliminate the D, but to change that to a pass. So you would have A, B, C, pass, but pass would run all the way from sixty-nine percent to twenty-five percent. And then, much like we did in the spring, to change the F to a no mark. So the student would still have to retake the class, but it wouldn't count negatively towards their GPA. And so, um, just the last meeting, we broke into three breakout rooms, and you can see my instructions down there. We're to kind of do a pro and a con list for each. And we still kept the idea of not proposing a change to the grading scale on the table as well. So, you know, let's, what are some of the pros and cons, Plan A, Plan B, or no change? And um two of the groups came back in favor of Plan A, and one of the groups came back in um favor of Plan B. So that kind of led, I mean, we're not, we haven't officially in a part of our norms, like established that we would make decisions based on consensus, but I think it's what we all want. We, we get along pretty well as a group. Um, you know, the group's pretty comfortable with each other. And so we spent a lot of time talking about, well, if we were gonna go with Plan A, there are some logistical questions that need to be um remedied, you know, so that we can make sure we have a really clear cohesive plan um to present to the teachers, to present to the principals, to present to the board, to, to everyone. Um, and so this is where we currently are gonna pick back up that conversation in the next meeting. And um then these are some of the area, areas that we'll be making those recommendations that'll just go to. I mean, we'll present them as a part of the whole um change to, um, you know, just the recommendations to the board. But um, these are just here, um, as, as those kinds of recommendations, nothing to be adopted. Um, Ms. Baca actually provided um me with this um closing quote, and I forgot the name already of the person who said it, but she did tell me nineteen sixty, it's nineteen sixty-four to be, so that, the exact, is that right, Ms. Baca?
Nineteen sixty-two by John Holt.
Oh, there we go. Um, and what's interesting about that and what she pointed out is that um we're, we're still having the same conversation, you know? Do we blame the students? Do we blame their families, their backgrounds? Or do we start kind of taking a look in the mirror? And I think that is what we're trying to essentially do um in this grading conversation. Um, but that, that's kind of where we're at for right now. So I'll, I'll pause there and um field any kind of questions or just get a sense of where you're at and if you think we're going in the right direction.
Dr. Robinson, can I make one more comment to your excellent presentation? Um, I just want to remind the board that in elementary school, since GPA is not something they have to worry about, they can do an actual standards-based grading system where they can, on a report card, list the standards, say in math, and then um give criteria based on to what extent students have learned those standards. And a student might start out early in the year on one standard, just at the emerging level, but you can see development over the course of the year. You can see the benefit of a report card that looks like that, the kind of information that that gives the student, the parent, the teacher, anybody else who works with the student. Because high schools have to calculate GPAs for colleges, it makes us really difficult, it makes it really difficult for us to come up with a, a grading policy that is that informative. And, you know, will colleges ever change? I don't know.
Thank you. Um, Trustee Ojipindi.
Yes, um, thank you. That was a great presentation. I think it's a very timely too when we think about the past semester and where students are at in terms of their education and, and, and their wellness and us as teachers being mindful of, that is where, you know, we're at as educators and professionals in our field, but where our students are at and meeting them at least halfway, right? Um, in, in this case, I think nowadays, more than halfway. And so through distance learning, this is especially relevant, because we're assessing students, you know, without in-person instruction, and we're assessing them based on, you know, basic needs and resources that we may not be providing them. So, um, there are a host of questions that that brings up within the scope of special education. Um, but my experience, the teachers taught me as well that if you're not providing services to students in special education and in general education setting, you're really not providing education equitably across the board. And I think we've discussed this a lot. So, um, in terms of grading, uh, I would say one, that this sounds good to me. Um, as a teacher, I've never kind of, um, kind of encouraged or endorsed the, the concept of that super F, because it, it's real. You know, once a student has a zero or a, a twenty percent or, you know, something that low, even something is, is low or as high as forty percent, it can be so damaging to their grade, but more importantly, their morale and the motivation that it almost defeats half the, the effort that teachers put in and educators put in and families put in, students most importantly. So, um, I think my question would be, um, actually two questions. One is, um, where in discussions, um, are we with teachers? I know this is a developing, you know, conversation, um, and certainly during the summertime. But where are we with teachers, um, and students? And will we be able to, you know, kind of like, you know, survey students' opinions on these things? Um, and two, um, in terms of the grade scale, colleges already understand GPAs through a number scale. And so if we were to, are we considering switching as well from letters to numbers? Um, certainly it's computed the same way either way. But um, um, in line with what um Dr. Deloria was mentioning, you know, when we look at elementary schools, a lot of students, you know, we're more, we're better informed as educators um, when we understand where they're at as opposed to what their score was. So, so more holistic, quantitative, I mean qualitative as well.
Thank you. Trustee Tahara.
Um, so just quickly, if for Plan B, if there's, um, the D would equal a pass, I know students and parents probably ask, well, how does that impact the child's GPA? And then also, um, are we still giving teachers the autonomy to grade how they want? As far as, I mean, the grading subcommittee is working on um, uh, the, the grading scale, but would the teachers still have the autonomy to, like, weight certain things like participation? Um, tests and homework? So I can, I can answer that. It's, it's nuanced, of course, but it's, it is within the board's authority to develop grading policy in terms of what the marks can be that a teacher can assign. Um, you can make a decision about the grading scale. There, you have a lot of uh authority in that area. There are some things that come from ed code. For example, you can't use attendance in a student's grade. But once a board
Or you can't, you can't use attendance to?
As part of grading criteria. If a student class, for example, yes. That's been like that for a long time. And, but once, once a board has that policy, it's up to the teacher to decide how to enact that policy with each of the students. And so there are only two conditions in ed code that would allow any of us to challenge a teacher's grade or to change a teacher's grade. And that is an arithmetic error or evidence that the teacher is incompetent. And so the, it's, it's the teacher's contract, ed code, and your policy um, that brings our grading practices around.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Lee.
Um, um, thank you. I'm, wonderful presentation, Dr. Robinson. I'm heartened by the discussion you had on slide fifteen with regards to the current grading scale, because I think being able to look at, you know, what's going on specifically with each assignment and with each, each student, I think is, is key. And, and I'm glad that you're, that you broached that topic and, and had that robust discussion. And also, I think the questions you're wrestling with in, on slide eighteen with regards to what are the recommendations going to be? I think, um, I, I like where it's headed. I think, I, I think, you know, even with both ideas, we are moving towards a more equitable type of grading policy. The idea of eliminating that super F, I think, is, is a very good thing. Or even, or even with Plan B, when just going to the no mark, either way, you're eliminating that, that one thing that can drive a, a student's grade and really just sort of deflate their, you know, their self-confidence. So I think we're on the right, I, I, I really liked where the discussion said. I think you're definitely, you're, you and your, are on the right track. Um, so kudos. Thank you.
So the answer to your questions is stand by me and play runner. It's a tie for me. And um, I am super excited about this presentation. Thank you so much for starting this work and starting this conversation. Um, I think that, you know, I'm more partial to Plan B, but I think it's a goal, right? That we don't have to do it now. You know, we're changing the policy now. We can change, progressively change the policy as people become more comfortable with it. Because, you know, the pushback we got before to this is, you know, how do we change a grading policy without teachers feeling like their work isn't getting the respect it deserves because grades aren't there to help? because grades aren't there to help the students understand, right? It helps the students understand that there's, there needs to be a consequence to doing it. So how do we switch it to something like Dr. Deloria was saying, well, there is some sort of accountability, like when they were in elementary school with project-based learning, which again, having three kids go through the system, they were all doing pretty well. You know, they all had their different areas where they were, were successful and, and achieved in the different levels. But I could clearly tell that out with the project-based grading. It was much easier for me to see where each of them were and what the issue was. And then as soon as they moved to middle school, that's when, you know, the A, B, C grades and one of my daughter, you know, went, went up with it and the other one completely dropped off the map. Like that, it was almost paralyzing the A, B, C, D, E, D, F. And then looking at IEPs, like IEPs stay project-based. So when you're in, when high school and you have an IEP, you're graded off of the IEP, which is, you know, decided as a group. So you still get that benefit that I wish we could give to more students so that there is some sort of parameters around it. Because I know, you know, when you get your mid-semester grades for a lot of students, if they, it's hard to get out of that zero. It's hard to get that one thing and early on in, in a semester that gets them a low, a low average, they almost give up because it's so hard to get out of it. So, you know, how do we work collaboratively with, with you and with the teachers? So that, that, that core issue is removed while still keeping an accountability piece in there that I do understand for teenagers, so they do feel there's accountability that doesn't get in the way of learning or feeling like I'm smart or feeling like I'm intelligent and that high school is for me and not just for the people that can get As, you know? So that's my thought process. So I'm, I'm fine with starting with whenever people are comfortable and then having it be a progression where we move up to something that's more closer to align with B. I muted myself by accident. So first trustee and Garrett had her hand up and then I'll speed it over to you, Dr. Deloria.
So I only have, I only have a quick story to say because I'm supporting Plan B. So in high school, I took geometry three times. And I took geometry three times because I got three Ds. So if I would have gotten a pass-
Wrong teacher.
Three times with a D. And I finally had to ask the teacher, like, so do I need to take geometry a fourth time? Because I'm happy. But, you know, she was like, no, 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 you already took it three times. It's okay. So for me, like, you know, I mean, the college thing, you know, obviously, you know, I did graduate from college. But, you know, when I was in high school, I did have a little bit, you know, like, I'm just, I was not really, you know, like, school was, was fine for me. I liked the engagement, but testing was always really hard for me. So I was like, you know, I can always go to community college with nothing wrong with that. So, you know, for somebody who was like, okay, I'm not going to worry about the SAT. I just want to graduate and, you know, get to community college and be a college transfer, which I was okay with, then, you know, I would fully support, you know, Plan B only because it was like really disheartening for me to have to take this class three times when obviously clearly I did not get the class. But because I didn't pass three times or I didn't get a pass, that I had to take it, you know, and I just, I take it, I take it in the springtime, I took it during the summertime and I took it in the fall. So that was like a wasted math that I had to take whereas I could, I was good in algebra. So why couldn't I just take algebra instead? You know, to progress to that instead of just keeping on with geometry. So that is just my, from my personal experience and obviously it's like kind of, I carried this with me because I remember this very vividly. So anyway, so thank you for just thinking about making that change. And, and you know, just, you know, even though we have the same struggle as like, you know, as we were in nineteen sixty, it's just like, you know, our, our, our mindset are changing and we should definitely just keep progressing and, and really think about, you know, again, what is the best needs for the students to, to motivate them and, and having them keep going, you know, and other, and other strengths. And, you know, like, because yeah, that definitely the D, the three Ds was definitely disheartening. So. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I appreciate your presentation. And you look very cute tonight. Turning it over to Dr. Deloria.
Thank you. So as the board members know, we have a special meeting coming up with Nicole Anderson. I don't know what date we finally all landed on, but we're going to meet for a special meeting just to work with her on which of our policies to start looking at right away from an equity lens. And certainly grading is one of them. But I also remind all of us, because I think even executive cabinet, when we went down to San Mateo SBA, I think it was Nicole Anderson who talked about the above the line and below the line, which aligns with PLCs as well. So you have the things above the line, which have to do with the policies and the practices and you get everything all in writing. And we can have a beautiful board policy on grading, but if we're not doing the under the line, the, the cultural work as well, it's not going to matter. Teachers are going to find a way. So we could go ahead, for example, and you, let's say you decided you like Plan A. I'm just picking that as an example. We could go ahead and rework synergy so that that grading scale is, you know, zero to twenties an app and twenty-one to forty is a D or whatever that is. But teachers could still give tests using that old scale, okay? And so you could just have a lot of students getting lots of Fs, even though it's in the zero to twenty percent range in synergy, but teachers are still using their old mindsets. So I just want us to remember that we have to do both at the same time. And I know it's a lot of work, but we have to keep working on the structural aspect, the practices and policies that support the work around the cultural change that has to happen at, at, at the, at each school level. And Lori and her group can come forward to you with a beautiful proposal. And yet if we, if the principals aren't working with their leadership teams in reshaping culture around why aren't students learning, then it's not going to matter. But I have lots of hope.
Yeah. And, and I think that was kind of the, the point I was trying to make, but you said it much better, was getting the why around it. And, you know, that's why I'm comfortable with, like, if the consensus and if there were enough teachers on there to where we think, on the committee, where we think their consensus will be reflected in a student, teacher body and there's a way we can ask or survey. I'm fine with moving forward with whatever plan they're comfortable moving forward with while still doing the work to move to the ultimate goal of which I hope will be B one day. And then the other point, and you, and what you said, Dr. Lori got me thinking is also, you know, our teachers and staff have lost a lot of foundational things that make them comfortable in the classroom. And we're going to maybe mess with another one. So I just want to also be mindful of that, that, you know, I know what it's like for me and my job and how much pride I take in my work. And when they put a new system or when something happens and I can't be worked the way I normally could do. So, you know, similar to being working from home, my whole world gets thrown off, right? You know, you just change a system and I can't work properly for a week, right? You know, and everyone's complaining. And so they went through a whole months of that. And now like, what is confidence like coming back? And now we're changing the grading system. So to, what can we do to still keep in mind on equity and, and try to move forward in the work? Because the work always continues, but also be mindful of, like Dr. Deloria said, the mindset of our teachers and staff. And how can we make this as comfortable for them as possible and palatable as possible? It's kind of where I'm at.
Just an FYI to throw in really quick. That's been a huge discussion in the, you know, there were some more, you know, radical ways, especially to phrase Plan A, like it's kind of hinting at standard space grading, which would be a number system. But it was like, okay, let's maybe pump the brakes on that a bit because we're already dealing with so much change and so much coming on it. And so familiarity has been one of the, the guiding principles. And that because of that, to speak to Dr. Deloria's point, you know, like I'm going to steal from Bettina Love says, you know, a lot of these ways when we change these policies, we're just managing inequity now, you know? Like we're just making it a little bit more manageable. So I think, yeah, the, the piece for it, for me is definitely going to be, but let's put some things in place so that we, we also keep the conversation on the forefront though, you know? And, and I think that's the, the big piece that we want to try and do with this. But absolutely, that work cannot be sacrificed in pursuit of policy work.
Okay, so what are we going to do?
I think Dr. Robinson's going to come back probably the next few weeks.
Got it.
Update on this.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much for the presentation. That was great.
And that's all we have tonight for you for our COVID nineteen update.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, everyone, for all your work again. I'm just always humbled by all the work by our superintendent and our executive cabinet and all our teachers and staff that are working collaboratively to get us through this. And, you know, I wish other agencies would work as well together to move us through this as we're doing. But, you know, we'll just continue to lead the way here. So moving on to future agenda items. So I know that was what I was going to ask about. So if we could, I don't know what the date is for the, the, the work study. That's going to be discussion on policy. So whatever date that is or if we need, oh, go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Is it regarding the one with Nicole, correct?
Yes.
I'm still waiting for her to respond on a date and then I'll-
Oh, got it.
You guys on the date to get your availability.
Okay, fantastic. All right. So I'll wait to hear back from her and I may just ping her myself for you, Candace, to let her know you're waiting on that. And the other thing is, and it doesn't have to be now, I mean, we could figure it out maybe at that meeting, put on the agenda. So we also put some times for us to work on governance. And we still need to do our handbook. So I would like for us to like update and finish our handbook together. But that could be like, you know, sometime in September. So whenever we get that work study, that'd be one of the things that we can work on is planning on the dates for us to get together just as a team to just look at our governance handbook and update it because it hasn't been updated for a few years, if that's okay with everyone.
I have another suggestion and I, it seems like I'm, I'm racing through the school year already. But back to school night and open enrollment, I mean, our open houses for eighth grade families is just around the corner. So I would like to suggest that we come back, kind of giving you our recommendations for how we're going to handle back to school night and open enrollment.
Okay. Yeah, that's going to be an interesting conversation how we are going to do that.
Have, have those dates been set?
Well, they were set, but they were set, you know,
For in person?
In this, I mean, I can't see in the next couple of weeks, parents and students coming onto campuses.
No, I mean, so if, if the dates had been, I, I, if the dates had been set, are we adjusting it for webinars?
So that's the conversation I think that we, that we need to have first with our principals and executive cap-
Okay.
Doreen, of course, and then we should bring that information back to you for feedback and input.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All right. So unless there's anything else, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I have.
Whoops, hold on, Ms. Bell.
Don't move yet, don't move yet. I just have a quick question. Is it possible to have maybe one more consent meeting? Because I think Human Resources has a couple of things that they need approved before August the eighteenth. So is it okay if I send out an email to get you all's availability?
Sure, we want to lock those folks in.
Yep. Good deal. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. After all that hard work, we don't want them to slip out of Tony's scrubs.
Right.
Ready to go. All right. With that, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Hi.
Okay, Andy second. All those in favor? Hi. All those opposed? Great. Thank you, guys. Thank you, board members. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Everybody.
Thursday.
See you Thursday, everybody.